There's one side. Wayne's asked for five dollars. We either do five dollars now. Or we do say three dollars and then two dollars day in June. But we've got to make a decision somewhere along the line of each individual needs to make a decision as to what they they think because I we've got a vote on this tonight. And Wayne, you want to take a position here?
We've got to start with the wages. And we talked about the other stuff. They move cars, difference in pension systems. We don't don't take a stand somewhere. We're just going to keep repeatedly doing everything we've done for the last six years. Hire. They move on, they hire, they move on. Done this job for forty years. See this past five, six years that COVID, all the other stuff. Just compounded the problems. Now, all the other departments, this COVID, COVID, everybody quit. They got out of this job. We saw the situation with Plymouth to South Bend, lost five people in one month. All over to South Bend. As they're advancing to something bigger and better. A lot of people, I mean, state police are down two hundred people. It it affects these small departments. I mean, it's not just us, it's the other departments. I think murders will be losing a guy. I don't I don't know where where it all stops. I don't know. How you put a price there us to other people in the town. I know there's been such a sensation about that. But I have dealt with all kinds of people my whole career, by every walk of life. Burgers, bank robbers, molesters, every, like, every week. We don't, we don't start somewhere or just keep doing the same thing. There are ten.
It's also a waste of training time.
It is.
Because you're doing it over and over.
Every time we send someone, they can't fifteen degrees. Paying them to go. So bring somebody else, one person.
Yes. You'd have to carry your bill to refresh my recollection on where we had with the the change of the salary ordinance. I'd like to get a motion to do that.
You passed the salary ordinance on two readings.
Right.
Okay. So you still need to do like that. After I put up the agenda, don't ask yesterday if it was put on the gen- on the agenda. So it's not on that one. As my question would be, do we have to do this tonight? One, because we've also got building commissioner discussion. Two, I don't want to add a bunch of things on the fly and get it wrong. Three, is it possible for Wayne to go ahead and start advertising while we finish up this discussion? I mean, we're kind of sitting waiting. I mean, it it sounds like you're waiting for the council to make a make a decision on the ad.
What what do you offer?
Yeah, go ahead, Karen. I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's common theme. Um, but basically, I mean, do we have to wait to advertise? We can go ahead and start that process of getting the word out and put a range on there. And sometimes you don't even put anything on there. But if someone's interested, hopefully, they're going to go ahead and apply, then we can finish up our work diligently and thoughtfully and pass the salary ordinance that's correct with a couple of other changes that we're going to probably need to catch up with, like the building commissioner. There's one other change that I just caught the other day that I'd like to do. I just don't want to, you know, we're kind of, we are, we've been discussing this for a while. But at the same time, it sounds like we're going to maybe come to some consensus here tonight. But I don't want to jump in and, you know, assume that everything's correct by the time, by the time we go to the meeting and then we pass the ordinance that that you all haven't looked over, the final one.
Well, actually, the salary ordinance has a range in it.
Correct.
And if we pass on the third read, the range that's that's there, that doesn't mean we have to pay the top dollar of that range.
But my point is, there's some other things in there now that I'd like to, you know, we're going to.
Yeah, and building commissioner shouldn't be that hard to actually switch to, you know, an agreement as long as we come to a consensus on the dollar figure. Then we should be able to just say that we're changing it to X number of dollars to X number of dollars, up to thirty hours pay per per week. It is week, yeah. And that should cover that. I don't. Then if you want to, you know, get down to the specifics, we could run that between now and.
Well, I think part of what, and I'm not going to speak for you, but there's a bigger picture issue of the employee retention and the conversations around that. Some work to be done on that. And if we advertise for hiring police, do we have to advertise a specific amount at this point?
I would advertise what people want. That range of what they're going to do. That's that's what they look at. The, I looked at the website the other day from the wall source, yeah, then fifty departments on there advertising.
A dollar amount for a salary reach.
What's the advantage of doing this in two big grains, Bill, that you mentioned?
I'm, I'm, I mean.
You mean, are we short on cash or what?
No, no, no. Money's not the issue. It's just, I think it's how some people perceive how we ought to do it. Do we do it in one lump sum? Or some people express an interest of doing partial now and partial in, say, June.
I I think it's more impactful, bigger splash to do it now. Just my personal opinion, not everyone.
That's my opinion too, but.
Well, I like Karen's idea about getting it all wrapped up in one and not doing it piecemeal. And so if we can talk about it and then over the next two weeks, you know, have it in black and white and it's all ironed out, then we just do it once. We're in agreement that we need to raise it. I don't see why Wayne can't go ahead and, you know, start advertising, because the ranges are probably going to go up in the next two weeks based on what Wayne wants to do. That's where I'm at. So I'm, I'm with Karen on this. You know, let's just do it one time rather than dribbling it up. Well.
You guys got all this. You get the salaries from the surrounding towns, right?
Uh, yeah, well, Wayne did it.
Yeah, I know.
He's already given it to us, yeah. I get, I left mine at the house. It's it's a real good synopsis.
Great, yeah.
It's a real good synopsis.
So Karen, procedure wise, if we, just to make a couple assumptions that aren't in play yet, but we agree to change to the salary range for the building commissioner position. We've already passed twice on the ordinance that includes the range for the police department. Do we need to then advertise again with a new ordinance or concern?
You don't have to advertise because it's not a public. I don't have to. But we can go ahead and amend that work. We can make changes to the ordinance until you pass, until it's passed on there being once it passes on third.
It does, yeah, the salary.
Opportunities to make changes up until that third reading. So that's where I'm coming from is let's make the changes that we need to make instead of having five salary ordinances passed and amended over the next, you know, ten weeks or whatever. When, you know, I don't think anyone's chomping at the, at the, I mean, other than Wayne wants, I understand your point about getting that information out, but you can get that information out without that salary ordinance being passed. I think, I think if you have a commitment from this council as far as what that salary is going to be, you could at least give a range.
Right.
And it's going to be arranged anyway because that person's going to come in here, they're going to have their probation for a period of time, and then they're going to have their year probation. So they're not going to start at that.
And the range is going to be based on the type of person he gets with their experience.
Yeah. Yeah. So I I agree with what you're suggesting and with I think Bill is, Bill gives us suggestions for this, let's revise it and include all the changes to it and consider that our meeting two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, I just didn't want to advertise something that that you get.
I agree. I don't have a problem. Because we have waited a little too long.
I think, I think the points that I'll take and then maybe we need to push this off to the next meeting.
I think on the salary ordinance portion for the building commissioner job, Ginny would like to actually train the person. And we have to have.
You guys just gave me, still acted on allowing me to make the offer.
Right. Yeah, we need to do.
Like you had in your town manager report.
But you have to, you know, that has to go through you anyway. Then we can, it can be reflected in the next version of the ordinance.
I agree.
Because we know, we we wrote that job description based on changing it anyway to an hourly position, a different type of position. And I just need you to basically agree on what that range is so I can go negotiate with that candidate.
You recommended twenty, starting.
Um, yeah, and I've got an eighteen to twenty-four an hour range.
So you can, you have negotiation with the government.
Yeah. I just want to be authorized to go make the offer, make it happen and.
And you guys were happy with.
Get a starting date, et cetera.
And you guys are happy with the person that you interviewed. I mean, that's important too, and doing what you're doing.
Do we have to make a decision?
We got to do that in the meeting.
Not in this meeting.
Not now.
Oh, not now, okay.
Not now, we do that. It's, it'll be in our town manager report.
Yeah, work session. You can stay.
Yeah, this is all discussed.
Well, there's another minor thing as far as Wayne's concerned that he's talked to me about and and as far as changing in the salary ordinance, not only the amount of money that he's going to advertise, but he wants to raise, I think by two dollars, your part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah, move the part-time help up two bucks.
And if you hadn't have said that here and you would have passed the ordinance on third reading, I don't know that that was reflected in the copy that I have.
So what would two bucks be? I thought, I thought you had it.
That patrol?
No, that's part-time.
Part-time, yeah.
I didn't see part-time.
I can't remember what I thought it was.
Well.
Karen will find it.
We'll find it, but I think it was two dollars, wasn't it, Wayne? Okay. What if we agree that we'll do this at the next meeting?
I, this may sound strange, but I think that in some regards, you you're better off paying some of your part-time close to what your beginners are earning. Hourly wage. Because first off, if they come in and do vacations for other people and you can get, say you could hire one or two more part-time people because wage was up, if they drive to Culver to work, you know, it makes it worth the while to drive here. We're, and we don't have to pay another seventeen grand for insurance on them.
Yeah, you don't have to pay the bennies.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you can pay almost as much and come out ahead of the game rather than paying overtime.
The range of the part-time officers is eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to what?
Eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty-four.
And.
And would you move?
And.
Twenty-four to twenty-six, and would you move the eighteen to twenty? Or not? Or would you leave the eighteen at eighteen is my question.
Well, actually, on this.
Yeah, on the low end.
I would, I would raise it from like, more like twenty-four.
Not even have a low end? Okay.
Just like a certain amount, like this is what we pay instead of the range?
That's what I'm asking.
I mean, but based on somebody's experience, it, we're going to have that range to pay somebody that's more, even on the part-time.
You know, and you get, we only, we only hire certified. You're like part-time. So they're already trained.
So the low, so what you're saying is the low end of the range doesn't mean anything?
I don't think it does.
Okay, well, that's, that's the question.
If your full-time was proposed on the last proposal without the five-dollar increase was twenty-eight to thirty-three, then I would say that the part-time officer should be listed as the same and then we keep them and put the others at. And you can pay him twenty-nine if you want or twenty-eight. You know, if they're relatively new, they.
I do care about the salary.
And then have a higher range if they're, they've got years of experience elsewhere and they're doing a good, you know, you could start them a little lower and then give them a bump up after six months if they're doing good, you know?
How many part, I mean, how often do you have a part-time person?
How often?
Yeah.
Often, it's like get someone to work.
Okay. Do you have any general idea on a monthly basis? How many times you need a part-time person to take it literally work every month?
You have to remember.
But how many hours?
Officers that have four weeks of eight, you got two officers that have four weeks of vacation, two officers that have one week, plus they each have two personal days plus four days. So, I mean, think about how much you paid out in vacation time. We've been paying out in vacation time because they can't take it.
Sure.
And that gives you an idea about how much.
That's what I'm at.
How many opportunities you have to hire a part, you know, to have a part-time person come in, otherwise they've got somebody working overtime.
Yeah, we have holidays throughout the year.
Most of the officers don't even look at holiday as having a holiday. They're scheduled on their normal schedule. They have to work it because we're twenty-four seven unless we happen to get part-time help for it.
Well, I think that if you have a higher rate, your chance of getting a part-time guy to come and work.
Like you said, I like that you're not paying the extra bennies.
Right. You know, you're not paying any more than what you'd pay at the parole office.
That is correct.
So where do you get these part-time people when you can get them?
Surrounding counties, other than, you know.
Yeah, they just want to make some extra money.
Do they come in with a probationary period?
They don't do a good job, you don't call them back.
That's right. So he's judge and jury.
Apparently, two. One has worked, can't remember when the last one worked. Can't see him getting to work or fall with what he likes or, one has worked twice in the last three months.
Okay.
I mean, they all have different agendas, so.
Yeah.
We got ten people on a part-time list that go away paid when they work.
Right.
So me, me and us, how many we have, you know, just trying to encourage somebody to make a bigger list.
So Wayne, are you satisfied with what we've been talking about today?
Yeah, I understand it, right?
Okay.
So I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Proceed your question. Okay, so are we all going to go back in between now and two weeks from now and have a number in our head that we want to give Wayne so we're prepared and we get through it expeditiously?
Well, I think Karen's going to take what we're talking about now and fit it into the salary ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, and get it out to us and we can review it and make comments. Am I missing something?
Yeah.
And what is that range increase?
I mean, it it's already been.
It's five at the top end.
Right now, you've got the range of the full-time deputy from twenty-eight to thirty-three hour, three dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
Yes, that was correct. But that's what's in the ordinance. And then the deputy, deputy chief is twenty-seven to thirty-five dollars per hour. And then the town marshal is two thousand eight eighty-one, twenty-five weekly. So that's basically the equivalent of a five-dollar range.
Or, but.
Everybody, it was a five-dollar.
Five-dollar crossboard.
Five dollars across the board.
Thank you.
But you just throw it, you put that range in there because they're not, especially with new patrols, they're not going to come in at that rate.
You get it toward the person.
The range is made higher than what we're talking.
Correct.
In a sense, it's actually lower than the thirty-three with, with the five.
Everybody happy with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I am.
Good, thanks, Bill. Sally?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next thing we need to look at is the leopard vehicle charging station.
Yeah, so I gave you some information on this. And really where this has been collected from, I think you guys recall, we got a Volkswagen funded EV station and part of that grant, we have to make charging available for free until a certain date, wherein you're one of that of two years, basically. Now, it doesn't mean we can't charge after, say, two-hour charging times. And so I've given you data from around the region of other people who are on the Volkswagen grant and who have stations. There's also some information from one of them. Goshen happens to have multiple stations, they're not all part of the grant, and how they charge for those particular stations. Having talked with MACOG about this and I talked a bit with Sean Cerisi and Plymouth about how their stations are being used, theirs are also located downtown. And what they're seeing is that you'll have people go hook up for two hours before the two hours runs out, they go disconnect, reconnect, so they don't have to pay this minimal fee. But it's convenient for the people who are charging because they work right there on that block, whereas we probably have people who leave the the car there for a bit, come back later. Many are coming through Culver academies. There's also someone who owns some Teslas in town who uses our stations. And we're getting quite a bit of use, especially on big busy touristy weekends and on big busy academy weekends. So ideally, our, what what we're proposing is to still continue the free for two hours. We could go back to NDOT and MACOG and say, we'd really like not have any free charging, but I don't see any justification for that. And then charge two dollars an hour. We would have to do this in the form of an ordinance, obviously, because it's fee, and do three readings on it. And then that ordinance would go to MACOG and NDOT and they would adjust the software on our machines to be able to allow that charge. They would have to work with Karen to set that up because that money then gets routed into an account where it would get routed. It depends on how Karen would want to handle it. They'll give her those options. I had shared with you that one of these stations charges three dollars an hour after the two hours of free charging. The reason they're doing that is they want to encourage people getting the free charging to then get off of the station because they have other stations in town that are a dollar seventeen an hour, up to four hours, and then it goes to five dollars an hour. So they had a reason for justifying their rate. So.
Some basic education here. What, how long does it take to charge a car, a range?
Yeah. It depends on the vehicle. My brother-in-law uses ours when he's in town. His takes about three and a half, four hours.
So this is a high-speed charger or is that a high-speed charger?
Um.
Because there are different speeds, I know.
Yeah. I honestly don't know, Bill. Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out supply and demand.
Yeah.
Oh, I got enough electricity.
My brother-in-law drives a Tesla and his has taken three and a half to four hours. So, and he kind of does what we hope, like he'll bring his up and then he'll walk over to CVS, then he'll walk over to the restaurant. Sometimes he goes in a store, my niece is like, buys him a gift. Then sometimes he'll walk back to my mom's house and then he'll go back up later and get it, just, but three and a half, four hours is his normal time. I don't know other.
Part of this. I mean, how low is, is his when it, when he charges it?
But no, it's not a high-speed one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it could be half full or it could be almost down to nothing. But most people, if, you know, in the middle of the day, it probably charged it at home before they came to town. So it wouldn't be.
And I know the ones up in Encilla, where my dad was in hospice up there for thirty-some days in a row, I saw the same vehicle parked there almost permanently at their station. So they obviously aren't charging because that thing was there all day long, every day. And I can't imagine someone needed to charge all day long, but they have two of them up there, I believe. So anyhow, we're, that's our recommendation is free for two hours, two dollars an hour after that. You can later change this down the road by ordinance if you want to charge all the time, but you have to wait till that Volkswagen period of time is up.
Can Sean say how they deal with the disconnect and reconnect?
Yeah, right now, I talked to MACOG about it. There's nothing in the software that can stop that. So they don't even have to move the vehicle, they can just unplug it, plug it right back in, and it restarts a new round of two, three hours. So.
Is there anything on the horizon? Seems like something.
Don't be spreading that around.
Yeah. I, I think at some point, I don't know.
Well, it's a luxury item and obviously, you know, if you have an EV, you can, vehicle, you can afford to pay this. I don't have a problem with the two dollars and the three dollars because we are a resort town and we've got a lot of out-of-town people that are going to be using it during the summer and you don't want somebody hoarding the whole thing, you know, for two dollars an hour.
Exactly.
For two dollars.
Yeah, I think too, one of the things MACOG suggested, since you're still under this free charging period of time that we have, they collect data. I sent you guys one of the data collection reports. They'll monitor for the year. They'll be able to tell you how long are people, are they connecting, reconnecting? We'll be able to look at that data and.
And at the end of the second year, we can look at all that data and put it all together and see is that three dollars, if that's what we were to choose, is that fair? I mean, maybe we want to go to four, maybe we go backward.
Aside from knowing your, your own cost at the station.
Is the software on the charging station able to shut down after two hours of charge for that initial charge?
I don't think so. Might be that, could be programmed in, I'm not sure.
Maybe draw electricity out of the car. Well, the extent of the joke.
Well, anyway. If you're okay with that, I'll write up the ordinance to match, reflect what you're. If you're okay with that, I'll write up the ordinance to match, reflect what you're. With. And then again, like I said, you can monitor it for a year and see where you're at, change it if you want to, like any other fee that we have.
It accepts a credit card, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I kind of agree with Bill. I think instead of two, it ought to be three. There's nothing cheap in this town anyway. Why not, why not make, you know, make some, it it's a luxury item.
Yeah.
That's.
Do you have any?
From?
But if they each have come out and unplug it and plug it back in.
That's let them, let them do that.
Yeah.
Well, the idea of it is to get them staying in downtown Culver and shopping while their vehicle is charging.
Yeah.
Something that here on the weekend from out of town, they're not gonna, you know, just unplug and go home.
We don't charge for parking in downtown Culver.
Right.
So in some ways, I think it's friendly to the tourists and visitors who not have any sort of an fee. Just because you drive an electronic or electric vehicle.
Me, you know, that guy over here, he keeps it plugged in. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But we're not charging after two hours.
I understand that one too.
At least start charging a little bit, the two bucks or whatever.
Yeah.
And give somebody else a chance to use it.
Sitting there too and enforce it.
You go to that or park.
Yeah, that you could do through a parking ordinance.
Person, we chalk a tire.
Yeah.
Drive off, they go out, move it. Starts all over again, but yeah, some people don't.
I'm, I'm good with two dollars an hour. I mean, there's, until we know exactly what. These charging stations cost us in electricity. Now, with that comes to, there's no point in charging. More than what the surrounding towns are charging. It looks like everybody's charging two bucks.
I think Bob came up with some figure, didn't he?
Two dollars.
No, but what it costs to.
Um.
What it costs them.
Yeah, I think he sent you guys some data on.
I don't.
The grant amount supposedly, that's one reason it it covers your cost over the course of that two years. For some reason, I feel like it was like a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month or something. I'd have to go look at it again, the data that Bob had.
That's what the town pays is a hundred and twenty-nine.
Don't quote me on that, though. I just.
But rough, yeah.
I feel like I understood it in his report.
We can ask him tonight.
Yeah, it's been, I mean, I think he said it early on when we first started this, like what the first month or two came out to.
How far along are we in into this whole program though?
A year.
We only been a year? Okay.
I think we're, we're coming up on a full year still. I think we have thought we still had a couple of months left on our.
Is it one year or two years?
Yeah, two or two.
It's two years.
I'll get the exact date so you know when you can modify it if you want to.
This is gonna take a while to write up the ordinance anyway.
Now, that I I've got a draft, I can get that to you for the next meeting.
But that's what I'm saying. It's not tonight. That's what, that's what.
Oh, since it is a public fee, you have to have a public hearing, so.
Right.
Um, and just looking at. If I'm pulling from the right station. Kind of track the the electric bills. I think this is the one. Um, but it's right around four hundred dollars that we're paying, but I believe that station also powers the lights. Along um, the main street. And then like for the um, the winter fest. You know, I think there were, there may have been generators or something hooked up to that station as well. So it's now. Even solely. I've also asked Bob. If the station could be programmed to turn off after two hours and he said, yes, he believes so. Um, but the. Thing is, it's smart enough to know if a car disconnects and then reconnects for the additional two hours. But I would, I would question, why would you want to have it turn off after two hours if they're then gonna start paying after two hours because then you just have a car sitting there?
Yeah, that's all I have on that one.
Okay, town manager.
What have you heard from him?
Well. I uh. I've heard uh. The fact that I said we'd call Mitch, I told Mitch we'd call during the. The work session here. Uh, I will say, I uh. Had a guy reach out to me. And I think I may have sent it to all of you from the Burton group, whatever it is.
Pretty, pretty.
Yeah, um. And the guy, um. The guy was up in Gary Friday. And he offered to come down and and talk and I went to have lunch with him and I've got to tell you, I was really impressed with this guy. Um. He'd been a town manager um. Before, um, two or three different areas. Um, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at what he sent, but that piece he put together for his current search. Um, certainly, I thought was outstanding. Um, the one he did for. Does that town um. Down near Attaberry. Um.
Was it Whitestown?
No, it's not Whitestown. It's uh, anyway. Um, and he has, he has five candidates for that job. Um. And one of the candidates, he said, is one of the candidates that Mitch had talked about. Um. He gave us two. And this was the guy that is over in Otterbine, Indiana. And he's one of the five for that uh. That particular situation. Um, but personally, I'm not too happy with Mitch, although we're paying a. We're paying a bargain price for Mitch. Um, I asked this guy, I said, well, what, what's the normal fee? And he said, well. He said somewhere between seventy-five hundred and nine thousand. Is what he would figure the a search. To meet our, our specifications, but I didn't, I didn't find us in any way, one thing, the other. I said, just, you know. What would it be and and how would you approach it, one thing, the other?
Do you know if there's been any advertising locally?
I haven't seen anything, but I haven't looked. Has anybody looked and seen if there's any locally?
Yeah, no, I don't believe there has been. I have not placed a first.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know if you all were depending on me to do that or if you guys were gonna take care of it. There was no communication as far or direction as far other than. You know, you guys set a budget, so um. That's where that is. I would also ask, have you specifically talked to Mitch? In an extended conversation about all of this?
Yep. And that's why I said I asked him if he'd be available this afternoon. So everybody can have a chance to question it. Or ask questions or see.
Can you tell them we're happy or that we're not getting results or?
Well. I s- I told him I wasn't happy. I can't speak for the whole group. But I said, I didn't think that um, you know, things were going on. And um. One thing Mitch. Said that I don't totally agree with him. Um, he said that we shouldn't be Googling these people. He said, there's always two sides of the story. And I said, well, I said, Mitch, you got to understand that we live in a town that basically social media is pretty active. And I said, to think that that we were to choose someone or rec or have someone in the finalist list. Um. Or chose somebody that uh, um, they're not gonna get Googled. I said, that just doesn't make any sense. And um, I did find out that um, I did find out because um, in talking with the. Uh, guy's name's Pete Olson. In talking with Pete, the guy from Otterbine. Is in, has a legal suit going over in Ohio. Um. So I don't know, he to, he volunteered, he told me that. Um, I don't know what the extent of that is, if the guy's a plaintiff or defendant. Um, but that's what he, you know, indicated as far as that guy is concerned. So, well, I guess part of my question is, is how many?
Actual applicants has, has Mitch gotten? Um, I'm assuming that he's gotten more than two or three. Uh, and that, you know, some of those, you know, by what their. Skill level was, decided weren't good for the job.
I get when people applied it indeed, I get a notice. Mitch also does and he goes through and. You know, but I, for a while I was getting several, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there's more than. What he has passed on to you.
Yeah.
And that stands to reason from what happened last time when he said that he'd had. Applicants, but then he narrowed it down to.
Yeah.
Three to five, I think it was three to five or maybe.
It's some Walmart reader that.
That's, that's right, yeah.
Cause they know how to run a computer.
Yeah, no, right. Well, I found, I I found one thing that was kind of interesting in 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 talking with this guy. Um. I think most of us in our working time have been recruited. And um, I asked him, I said, you know, rather than sit and wait for. Something to show up and indeed, or, you know, them answering an ad. I said, do you go out and actively, you know, recruit? And he said that he did, but he said not all search firms do that.
Well, there's also some of the platforms now, you can um, identify yourself on a platform like LinkedIn. You can say I'm available and looking for work. So there are firms that won't only approach those candidates and then there are firms that'll approach anybody. Uh, you know, and that's one of the more. Used and popular platforms and and in the industry, so.
Uh, you say LinkedIn?
Yes, like Grant has a LinkedIn profile. He's in IT and he has a lot of certifications. And really specialized areas. He gets recruited all the time. But some of those, depending on your industry and your position, you start to go, yeah. You recruiters are a dime a dozen because you get twenty inquiries. I get inquiries every single day on LinkedIn for editing and publishing jobs. Um, because a lot of my profile has my publishing career. Um, and many of them are. Uh, I know from the industry, I'm not about to answer that inquiry because I know from whence it comes. Um, and what those are, you know, some of them are just shady deals or they're recruiting you from. Other countries and for different reasons, but it just depends on the industry and what you're getting recruited for. So not all recruitment is weighed same way by those who get recruited, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, should we call Mitch?
Sure.
I would say, yeah, yeah.
Can I say something or is this, can I not talk until the very end?
Go ahead.
So I was an executive recruiter in New York for thirty-five plus years, okay? And there's just, are we even, that we said the big thing, headhunter? And if you think about what you want, most people who's like happy and employed and doing really well in their job, they're not looking at. This stuff, being employed and doing really well in this job, those are the people you want to steal. So you have to actively recruit them. And if this guy, anybody, I don't care what. You know, the things I would, are much, much more senior than this, but I'm just saying, the process is so similar. And Mitch, by this time, should have called within a hundred and fifty mile radius. You know, town managers, people reported to town manager, you know, and even you guys could do it too. You're always good for referrals. Who do you know, who do you, who do you speak? It has to be this hugely proactive outreach. And if he's not, you not, you're not, I mean, I know you've gotten people from ads before, but. I'm telling you, you're not getting the best people unless you have someone who recruits. And they should, if he, I don't know if he does municipal recruitment or he has special, specialization, he should be able to tell you, that's why you want to jump in for your partner. He should be able to tell you where he's been, who he's reached out to, what areas he's covered, what's got Northern Indiana done, whether he's gone down. From the south or, I mean, he should have, because every time you do a search, it's set up just like, you know, an army invasion. You know, where am I going? And, you know, usually you have a special piece of yard, you know, a ton of people, but. You, if it's something where you gotta dig and you have to find somebody, you set it up just like a, just like a map where you're gonna go attack the enemy. And you know where you're gonna go and he should be able to tell you that. And he should be able to tell you why nobody's saying yes. Like whether they're like callers too small, I don't like that part of the state. He should give you that you're not paying enough money. Because you don't have any real feedback right now as to why you don't have anybody. And the thing that he said, don't Google them. I'd fire him based on that alone because it's the first thing I ever did when somebody came, I would Google them, I would. Reference them, I would, you do everything you need to do to make sure you got somebody great. So anyway, I'm just. I'm just saying my deal for this guy, if he's running ad, you're not gonna get the kind of, kind of, um. Reaction that you want to get.
January, so he's been on this for almost seventy days.
I mean.
And uh.
He he should, he should be able to.
You guys get Googled. I mean, every, any potential candidate is gonna Google, ask current, now leaving town manager.
Yeah, they're gonna, they'll Google Jenny, they'll Google call for town man. They're just like, they're gonna do it to you. You know, yeah.
Guy, this guy should have, he should have a plan in front of.
They're, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna look up uh, council minutes and.
Oh, yeah.
And see, see what the questions are from the audience and, you know, look and see, hear about lawsuits, I mean.
But I think we did with some of the candidates that you had recommended.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree.
That's, I, I agree with you. I'm not at all pleased with what he's doing.
You gotta get. Yes.
Is probably what it is.
Maybe you should just take that to an offline conversation between council president and him.
Yeah.
Instead of in a public study.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna get uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he should just be able to give you data. That's what I'm always saying, that's, I've heard you guys talk about it twice now and twice. You have no data. He should be saying, I've talked to a hundred and fifty people. And this is what they're saying to me and this is why they're not putting themselves in play and, you know, blah, 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 blah.
That's just the conversation we need to have one-on-one.
Yes.
Well.
Sorry, and me.
No.
No, thank you.
Now, and I, and I'll comment on what, on what Boo was saying, you know. I have not made any significant effort toward looking for a position. I've been recruited. By seven or eight different companies in a brief period of time. So I agree when, and especially if someone thinks you're available, they're gonna make that call. They, if they really want you and they're gonna start that conversation with you. Um, so you then have to decide if you're, you're gonna take those calls and what are they about? And there were certain ones I got where it's like, oh, hell no, I have no interest in that industry. Or uh, that sounds interesting, but you know, so it it it, there's a lot of truth to that. And. I, I probably wouldn't have even thought to contact the company that I'm likely headed for.
Got recruited.
Yes. I wouldn't have even thought it. So, and I, I wouldn't just, I also don't think that it's totally effective for the. for the person looking for a job to just randomly throw your profile out on LinkedIn, et cetera. I mean, I get contacted there, but nine times out of ten, it's scam stuff. And it's, or I know it's unethical. Or it's a, a company in a third world country trying to get me to do, uh, work at a certain rates, you know, long story, but.
And, and you should know by the, another thing Mitch should be able to tell you, you just, is that when you're in search, you, you, you know everything about people. So you not only know what they do, but you know that they're originally from a bizarre place like South Dakota. You know, so they consider living in the Midwest or, so Mitch should know people who are willing to go to a small town. You know, he should say, wow, I got that great guy down in, what'd you say, Whitestown, you know, I mean, that great guy down, he come up, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this Culver thing and see if this works. All of that, all that data you should have. He should be able to share. So I'm just saying to, that may get you somewhere in terms of what he's actually doing, which I'm saying from my perspective as someone who was in the business, I think he's doing kind of nothing.
Cost a new time.
Yeah.
I agree. It's cost a new time. He's a municipal guy. He's supposedly the guy who knows municipal management. Knows his environment, that's what he sold you on. Uh, and he should tell you where he is, where he's going, in the making.
And, and maybe he will, by the way, maybe you just don't know it. Maybe he will give you, but he should, he should be able to step right through that.
Yeah.
Well, I think the other thing we've really had from him, uh, was through Karen. Um, with the two candidates that he passed on, I haven't heard anything more from him as far as.
Two candidates is pathetic.
Well, I think it is. I think it's pathetic and, and as I say, you, you know, having to call him to get an update. Um.
Has he ever called you in his own?
I've never heard from him, other than one I've called him.
Bill, you can have like a, a time every week, you say you are gonna report to me Wednesday morning, blah, blah, blah. That's, I never had a search where I didn't have the board or that, right, you know, book and me, you are going to be there and you're gonna tell us what's done and you're gonna give us an update and, you know, prepare.
Well, they all, like. Mitch says there's not much activity going on and the other guy said the same thing that.
I mean, I think what Boo was talking about is.
But why is there not much activity going on?
Exactly.
Like Boo said, they Google Culver or they Google, you know, and, and, and people just don't like what they're reading. I mean, it, to be blunt, but.
Might not even be there yet. It's just, you don't even know.
Right, but, but we need to know that, no.
Yeah.
But that's a question you have to ask Mitch.
Sideways talked about the Durf candidate.
Yes.
It's a reality everywhere, but that's not an excuse. They have to have a plan and how you would address that, you know?
Yeah, so he's just, he was just giving you like, the head on person should give you pretty much, you know, this is, well, it's, you're not paying enough or whatever it is, but you, you guys don't even know why.
You're not gonna hang a sign over that empty office and go on, it's really tough out there. That doesn't work.
Yeah.
Cannot hang a sign that says it's really tough out there, uh, we're sorry.
Well, and to Jenny's point, when you're good, people are calling you. You shouldn't have to go ahead and, you know, put your name out there, I'm available. Cause oftentimes when people change from one position to another, they're happy where they are and they're content. But, you know, they wanna.
Last comment and apologize that we are hijacking this, this is our whole world. You have to have a story. People only move for several reasons, or pay. Increase in responsibility, something that is self fulfilled, three reasons they move. And, uh, the combination of that, but it's, and that all fits into your story. I have no idea what Mitch, maybe a good guy, I don't know what story he's telling, potential candidates will listen to along the phone. But to say, why would I wanna consider doing something, become a town manager position caller? He should repeat that story to you, Bill.
Yeah.
He should be able to say, if you're a candidate, tell me why, what you're telling these people. I think, well, say one thing, I posted, I, like, I got a copy of your posted town manager position profile. Doesn't make me jump up and down and I live here.
Okay.
It doesn't, but you know, that's, that's it. And, and I'm just saying, you have to, because that's the environment. Well, that's the last comment. But based on all this feedback, Bill, I, I would suggest that you call him and ask him to give you a re- report outlining what his, what his search efforts have been, um, what he has done besides just placing ads. And, uh, what he has found out and what has been his target, uh, for recruitment.
Yeah. Well, I can do that. I mean, do we have anything else that we need to discuss in this work session? I don't think so, but I don't think so either. Karen, do you have anything else?
Um. So we're gonna go ahead and I've done the salary ordinance. And, um, like charging vehicle station.
Okay, Jenny, anything else? We'll see all that in two weeks, right? Over the next two weeks.
Yeah, you will see that by the end of the week.
No, I, I understand. Yeah, I understand, but.
Uh, EV station.
Okay. Everybody just needs to reply back if they're happy.
Can I reply back to one person?
Right, right, not all. Well, then I'll see everybody, we'll see everybody again at six thirty and I'll, in the meantime, I'll have a one on one with Mitch.